I call to order the work session of the Beaverton School Board on Thursday, November 20th, 2025 at 5:45 PM. All seven board members are present, six members are in person, and Karen is joining us online. And our first topic this evening is food insecurity supports with Shelley Bailey Shaw. I'll ask Shelley too.
Great.
Thank you.
Good evening, thanks for having me. Tonight, I'm going to be describing to you how the district is addressing food insecurity being experienced by our families. And this, of course, is outside of the efforts of Nutrition Services. They're serving free breakfasts and lunch to as many students as possible. And as a side note, Nutrition Services served their one millionth lunch just last week. So kudos to them for all the hard work that they're doing. What I'm talking about is how we supplement beyond school meals. And as you know, this issue has been particularly acute during the past month with the suspension of SNAP benefits. And even though those benefits have been reinstated, we still find that there is a tremendous need in our community. So first, let's talk about food pantries. At the direction of the superintendent, we initiated a food pantry project two weeks ago. The idea was to purchase roughly $200,000 worth of staples to fill 56 pantries district-wide. So that's one in every school, plus our CTP and early college programs, so that all our BSD families in need could have easy access to food. The amount of food that each school received was determined on the SAM model. So in other words, it took into account both enrollment and poverty. And I will tell you, it is not easy to source $200,000 or $200,000 worth of food in two days. But we did do it, thanks to these folks. And this is Todd and Jen Walsh. They're owners of the Grocery Outlet in Tannas, Born. We previously had worked with Grocery Outlet during the pandemic when we were putting together food boxes. So because of that prior relationship, and because it's a lot easier to work with an owner versus a corporation when you're talking about such a short timeline, we turned to Grocery Outlet. And Ted, in particular, moved mountains for us in the last two weeks. To understand the scope of this project, I want you to take a look at this picture. This particular store typically gets one semi-truck of food every week. Last week, they received four, and three of them were ours. This is their storage space. As you can see, it's not that big. So we spread the three trucks over four days of sorting. Was it disruptive to the Grocery Outlet store? It absolutely was disruptive to their operations. And keep in mind, we are two weeks before the Thanksgiving holiday here. So that store, that's their busiest time of the year, yet they were very, very generous. And again, we want to thank the Walshes and Grocery Outlet. That food does not sort itself. We put out a call for help to staff who work at the district office and the district support center, and they answered. We had about 60 staff members and even some spouses, yes, Sarah's husband, John showed up, working in teams to pack the pallets. It was hours and hours of very physically demanding work. Then those 123 pallets were turned over to our amazing courier team led by BJ Donovan. Our couriers basically dropped everything last week to deliver food to schools. And I want to shout out Eric Johnson, Michael Phillips, Chad Phelps, Lawrence Rosa, and Nicholas Hilton. Once the pallets arrived at school, staff unloaded them and created pantries. The one you see here is at McKay. McKay is one of our smallest schools. Some of the pantries at our larger schools are floor-to-ceiling food right now. Each school has devised its own method of distribution. Some have invited community to come in and just choose and take what they want, like they are here at McKay. Others are taking orders, and then food boxes are being assembled by PTOs. So it's really whatever works for that particular community. While the funding for this project is a one-time distribution, schools have been given the option to solicit donations and keep their pantries open more long-term. So that all happened last week. This, however, has been happening for years. In cooperation with the Oregon Food Bank and Urban Gleaners, we operate 11 markets across the district. These are pop-up markets that are either weekly or bi-weekly, depending on the site. We have a waitlist of schools that would like to have a market too, but right now, the Oregon Food Bank and Urban Gleaners have limited capacity. These markets are open to the general public. We have a 12th market at Aloha High School that's just open to students. Markets are promoted to families via Parent Square, on our website, in school newsletters, and via handouts distributed at schools. And to give you an idea of the scale, last year, Oregon Food Bank distributed about $168,000 worth of food through BSD, and Urban Gleaners distributed more than $1 million in food through BSD. Also, at this time of year, we get a large donation of turkeys and fixings, plus some staples through Sunshine Division. Our allocation this year was 180 turkeys. The CCI team actually sorted all today, which is why I'm sitting here in jeans and a t-shirt, because I was sorting food today. And our couriers are in the process of delivering this food to our schools, and it will be pushed out through those urban markets, and it'll be distributed over the next couple of weeks. Finally, we're again partnering with the Beaverton Education Foundation on the Feed My Body, Feed My Brain campaign to raise funds for the purchase of grocery gift cards. Those cards get distributed to families identified by our school counselors who need extra help over winter break when their children are not able to eat at school. A grocery gift card gives a family the gift of choice. It gives them the gift of agency. And at present, BEF has raised about $65,000 of their $100,000 goal. So thank you to all of you, because I know you've all already donated. If folks are watching and they haven't donated, and you're interested in supporting the campaign, we have included the QR code here, and you can also go to BEF's website to donate. The campaign ends on November 30th. So that's a look at some efforts we've had going in just the last couple of months, and I'm happy to take questions.
Thank you. Anyone? Dr. Tron?
Thank you, Shelley. And thank you, central office staff and the superintendent, who actually opened up your budget for $200,000 and also of all your extra time. So we appreciate that. I also want to take the opportunity to thank Grocery Outlet owners, who are a big part of this, because without them, it's really impossible to support our community, just make it much easier. So thank you so much.
Thank you. I'll pass it along.
Thank you. Also, thank you to the partnerships that we have with Oregon Food Bank, Sunshine Division, and especially Beaverton Education Association. And just much gratitude. Thank you.
Thanks.
Dr. Potter?
Echo the gratitude. And then also, as a parent, I've seen the outcome of the messaging coming to families. And I've seen it be very respectful. It's very dignified. It's confidential. And so the full circle communication has been very engaging, very respectful, and from my perspective, also very responsive. So thank you again for everybody. In addition to all of the other things that we are juggling to prioritize, this need has been very, very appreciated.
Thank you. Dr. Carpenter?
Thank you. With the BEF grocery cards, or cash, what is the form of that card? Is it a cash card? Is it for Fred Meyer, or?
They're grocery cards through Safeway, and they have exemptions on them, so they cannot be used for alcohol, tobacco, or lottery. And so they're only to be used for food in the Safeway stores. We purchase them through Safeway because we get an additional 5% discount, and so we're able to stretch our dollars more.
And when the schools are handing them out to the families that they've identified, is there any ability for them to also be responsive in a similar way to, actually, this family isn't going to leave their house to go shopping, and to be able to do some of that shopping for the students and their families?
So we typically give these cards out right before winter break, so that they can use the cards during winter break in order to cover whatever food needs they might have, since kids aren't getting fed at school. So unfortunately, we don't have staff working during winter break who can actually do shopping. But I know that in some cases, the cards are either being sent home with the students or delivered to the home in case the family is unable to come to the school in order to pick up their card.
Okay. And so I guess, you know, with this current crisis, I just am curious about how many families might need that extra. Is there any ability to give the cards out, to offer that to families? If we've identified a family, and yes, it normally goes home just before the holiday break, could, is there any way to identify families that, like, actually, we are going to shop and send you home with the food? Is that possible at this point?
Unfortunately, because of the timeline of when we get the total amount of money and how long it takes us to get the cards processed, we can't get the cards to families any earlier than we already are. But I know that our families, our counselors are very responsive to families' needs, and if they're not going to use those cards right away, they are connecting them with those school pantries. So we're doing our best to make sure that folks have what they need.
Okay. Thank you.
Dr. Potter?
Along those lines, I was curious about that too, about the, how to engage with families that may not be able to come in for a variety of reasons. And at least in the school leadership communication that I've received as a parent, there is an option to pick up, choose for yourself, or have it delivered by the social worker. And so in addition, again, to everything else that they're juggling, they're prioritizing this need in a way that meets the need of the people who are sharing their desire to engage in it. So.
And what I hear from school leaders and counselors is that they're very connected to these families, so they know what their circumstance is right now, and they're trying to help them through.
Director Kossen?
I know. Did you want Dr. Perez first? Sorry. Call my name, so I'll take it.
I didn't see her hand.
No, it's fine. I saw Director Raji pointing. I was like, wait, am I? Thank you. I echo a lot of the gratitude that's already been shared. Going back to communication that was highlighted, can you just reiterate how it was communicated? And then, secondly, what was the mechanism, especially for food pantries, to, like, access? Because I know they could pick it up, but it seemed like there was a form they could fill out to do time, like, that's what I saw. Like, I don't know if it was fed, depending on school, just curious.
It did. So every school had the ability to choose how it was they were going to distribute their food. Some, there's a handful of our schools that already had pantries, and they already had processes, and so they continued to use the mechanisms that they already have in place. By the way, those schools that already had pre-existing pantries, my understanding is that they, those principals meant with the other principals and kind of gave them some ideas, some options about the different methods in which they could use. So it sounds like your school was using some sort of form, whereas the picture I showed you of McKay, I asked them, you know, how are you managing this? And they just put out an open invitation to their families, and they can come anytime during the day, sign in through Raptor, and then they were able to access the pantry. So each school was communicating via either a separate message or via their newsletter to all their families about what it was their process was going to be.
Yeah. And it was, I'm assuming it was mostly just Parent Square and back and forth, or maybe some email, and that was, those were the two channels?
And some of that was done with outreach from the counselors or the social workers in those schools.
Direct outreach. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Perez, did you have a question?
No, I was just commenting again, like, the other directors are saying thank you to Grocery Outlet and all the volunteers. As a parent, I've been receiving the notices as well, not only for, from the district as far as food security, but also for, to volunteer at the school, to help sort some of the food and get it ready for the families that would be in need. So thanks. I know it's an effort from across, it fills me with joy to see the collaboration with partners, with, you know, BEF and this campaign that people can help, and then other, you know, nonprofit organizations that we work with, as well as staff leaning in, and the way that, I've appreciated the way that our social workers and our counselors at our schools have been able to organize, to get this out for our families. So thank you.
It really is an example of community partnership. I mean, we have the BSD Awards where we highlight community partnership every year, and this is what it looks like, right? Like, this is the community partnership in the moment, when we had a need and a big task, and we had people we could lean on and call on, so.
Thank you. Director Kossen?
Real quick, going back to communication, I did see on the website, it lists, obviously, available food resources, highlights the pantries, references some of those partners that you are talking about, Salvation Army, Beaverton Resource Center. Do you ever do anything reverse, where if someone goes to one of those resources, they know that if they have connections or tie-ins to school, that we have pantries? Just, again, looking for means to reach out to families, especially if they are not using Parent Square, familiar with it. I'm just curious, from an equity standpoint, if you ever reverse partner that way and create awareness through other channels that families might know, to educate them that, hey, there is something happening in your own schools?
I know that a lot of the principals are taking advantage of those weekly or bi-weekly markets to, when they see families come, for those to just remind them that, oh, don't forget, you also have access to the school pantry. So I think they're using those opportunities in order to remind them.
Thank you. I do think, again, to your very valid point, right, like, the value of that partnership, to be able to go both ways, will be really powerful, because I really don't want us to just assume that everyone gets those messages and knows. And we really need to find more meaningful ways to reach people where they are, and that might be at those partners, and we need to bring them in and say, hey, if you have kids in schools or connection to the schools, that's also a place we can get help.
Yeah. And I just don't, I want to make sure that I'm uplifting the work of the counselors and the social workers, because they too, it's not just a Parent Square message, right? They're going to get a call. They're going to get someone reaching out to them on a one-on-one basis. So I do feel good about the fact that we're trying to reach those in need.
Thank you. I wanted to thank everyone, you know, the staff members, you know, putting in that extra time, their spouses who could come. One of the questions I had, thank you for, Dr. Balderas, for the extra money. How long will that, do you think, in those pantries, it will last? And once, I have no idea, right? So how long will that last? And then, once it finishes, how are we going to, if there is a need, what is our next step, or what are we thinking about?
Let me answer the second part of that question first. We have said to schools that, like the pantries that already existed, and those existed based on donation, right? Those schools that already had pantries were getting donations and giving it out. We've encouraged the principals that, if you continue to have a need, you can reach out to your community, your school community, and continue to get donations to keep the pantry going. As far as district funds, we don't have any plans at this point to put more district funds toward that. And as far as how long the food's going to last, I'm going to defer that question to the principals we have here in the room who are coming up to talk about the next segment, because I think they're going to have a better perspective on that than I am.
Okay. Sounds good. Right. Are we done with the first, or?
I'm done if you're done with me.
Yes. Thank you. Thank you so much.
Okay. Great.
Our next agenda item is immigration-related supports with Dr. Shelley Regiani and team.
Here we go. Good evening, Chair Garg, Directors, Dr. Balderas. I'm Shelley Regiani. I am the Associate Superintendent of Teaching and Learning here in the Beaverton School District. This evening, I am joined by my esteemed colleagues, Jill O'Neill, Executive Director for Teaching and Learning and Option Programs, Dr. Tatiana Savaios, who is the Administrator for Equity and Inclusion, Shoshi Giyoka, who is our Administrator for Support Services, Andrew Curle, who is Principal at Beaverton High School, and Robin Kabrowski, Executive Administrator for K-8 Programs here in the Beaverton School District. Can I ask you, please, to pass the clipper? Thank you so much. This evening, what we have prepared for you is a summary of the activities that we've been taking in the Beaverton School District since I joined the Beaverton School District. I also want to recognize that there have been a number of things that happened long before I arrived last year. This is a well-established team, many people who have been here for a number of years with deep care and connection to our community. The things that we're going to be discussing tonight are not new. They're not new topics. They are not new processes. But under the time of the world we're in right now, it is top of mind for many people. So it's our opportunity to share with our community and to share with you this evening what we have been doing inside of the Beaverton School District to support all of our students with a special attention to supporting our immigrant students and families. This last week, our board received a basic timeline, if you will. It's certainly not date-by-date, but if you look on the left-hand side of your screen, this is what was shared over the highlight activities of '24, '25. Right from the beginning of the school year, we started talking with all of our administrators about the temperature, if you will, of the community, of the nation at large, and just the tensions that were being experienced by some of our students, some of our community members, and some of our staff. And we wanted to make sure that we were addressing those needs and talking about supporting people in a trauma-informed way when there are regional or national events that occur. Safeguarding student information was also top of mind, as well as all of the other components that you see on here, including standing up the district website that communicates clearly to the community about the processes for protecting student information, how to access resources, how to access legal services, how to access other social services, the drainings that we did for all of our staff, the training that we provided to this school board in one of our work sessions, and then also the extensive things that began happening at our schools and continued throughout the school year. We didn't miss a beat. 2025 school year, 2025, '26 arrived, and we kept the work moving forward, updating all of our training protocols. You also recall that there was a change in the state statute regarding JOA policy, which is how we talk about releasing student information. All of that had a cascading effect. When we talk about safeguarding student information, all of that is undergirded by our policies and state law. So every time there is a shift, we shift. We communicate that out to staff. We have a protocol for communicating that to staff and making sure that the office professionals, we typically say our OAs, our Office Administrative Support Staff, and all of our administrators, have that knowledge and can provide that back to community and certainly to staff. Expanding on our Intranet site for supports for staff, so they have immediate resources to go to, and expanding what is on our public-facing website, so our community has immediate things to access. Tonight, we'll be sharing some of those additional resources with you. We've also are going to be highlighting the additional supports we've been able to uplift for families in this time. We heard from Shelley Bailey Shaw about the pop-up pantries and how our schools are supporting families, and you'll also hear from our team this evening about meeting those needs. And lastly, and certainly not least, the way that we're additionally supporting families with emergency preparedness. The first thing that I want to highlight is BSD's network of connection. This isn't done in a vacuum. All of this work that we're prepared for you this evening, it wasn't done by a single person, and not even just the amazing people that are joining me here at this table. It's a collective. It's the questions, it's the resources, it's the supports that are raised by our dear colleagues, our principals, our classified staff, our certified staff, who on a regular basis are communicating with me. Right before this, this evening, I had emails from colleagues who said, hey, I have an idea. If we switch this and this, more people will be able to access this. Done. We're going to get that done tomorrow. That's how this works. We are a community of practitioners here to support, and we take each other's ideas, and we make those the best that we possibly can for our students. In addition to the great work the people do here and how networked they are, Beaverton also is part of a local and statewide Equity Directors Network. Those who lift the social service work and social justice work within their districts meet oftentimes twice monthly for extended period of time, working in a community of practitioners on problems of practice. This topic tonight is definitely one that is front of mind across our state, and that is a place where we see a lot of support in workplace, job-alike groups. Several of our local school districts that are surrounding us also partner in that group, so we share information back and forth on a regular basis with one another. I'm also proud to say that Beaverton has stood as a leader. If you look at other districts' websites, you might say, oh, wow, that looks familiar. We don't have a trademark on any of this. We fully say, please take what you see on our public-facing website, download it, it's there for everybody on purpose to download, because we want the information out there for our full community. Most of the times, the resources are both in English and Spanish, and certainly, anything that is not downloadable is translated in any language that is available. We want other school districts to take that as something that they could say, all right, I now have a template from which I can work. And we've been able to share those resources across the state. We also have an Associate Superintendents Network where we do similar work on this topic, as well as the other topics related to immigration and how students are being impacted educationally and socially emotionally. Our superintendents network across the state as well. And I'd have to say also, our association of, the Oregon Association of Latino Administrators, that's another source of strength that we're deeply connected to with some leaders here in the district. On the national level, we are also connected. Even earlier today, Dr. Balderas and I were with the Newcomer Network, which is a national network of leaders across the country, talking about this topic, and he and I had the opportunity to share the work of Beaverton and network with others and share ideas and resources. Also, earlier this year, Dr. Balderas was a presenter and a contributor to the Immigration Legal Resource Center, another national connection. It's important for us to know what is happening in other places. It's also important for us to be able to share the Oregon context. When we are able to do that, we share information with each other, and we learn from one another. As I said, this isn't done in isolation. We learn from one another across this country, even though we have different contexts, and Oregon has its own uniquenesses, as does Washington County, but there are morsels and ideas that we learn from one another very, very frequently. I'm going to turn it to Shoshi Giyoka to be able to explain this slide. And as we do, I would like to be able to note that attendance matters in every context. Attendance matters a little differently in the context that we're speaking of tonight, so I would like for her to be able to share what this information means.
Thank you, Dr. Regiani. Good evening. It is so great to be back in Beaverton. I just wanted to say that. So what you see is a screenshot of our new data platform that IT department has worked so hard to showcase our attendance rate, like, real-time, everyday attendance rate, as opposed to having to wait a week, a month, and so forth. So we have this, we have access to real-life data in terms of attendance. So this is a screenshot of our data dashboard to show the year-to-date, daily average attendance by race, and that shows the last 30-plus days. And so what you see on the red line is the all-student attendance rate. Are you with me when I do this? So that's the red line. And you can also see the bar graphs based on different racial groups. And although we have not seen any significant discrepancies as of today by race in terms of attendance rate, we are definitely closely monitoring. of attendance rate, we are definitely closely monitoring because, again, attendance does matter. And if the number shows that we need to pay attention to a particular group of students, then we definitely need to do that. But having access to data really helps us develop strategies necessary to reach out to students that are impacted. And as of today, what I just found out is that our attendance, overall attendance, has increased by a little bit. And we collectively, as a district, are taking a number of initiatives to increase attendance for all students. And again, as Dr. Reggiani said, attendance matters, and this is something that we pay close attention to. So again, this is a dashboard that we use to monitor where we are as of today, how we are doing to support our students. And when schools notice any decrease in attendance, they do reach out. We do have attendance team, we have amazing team members at every school that checks in with students and families. And without probing too much, when they notice any kind of a drop, they do reach out to say, "Hey, how are you doing? We've noticed that we haven't seen you. Is everything okay?" So our staff members have been not just encouraged, but they really show up every day with the trauma-informed approach to support students and families if they notice any kind of a decrease in terms of attendance rate. Because if students feel connected, if students feel like they belong, when students have trusted adults, they do come to school. And when we don't see students, we show up with, again, the approach of care and concerns, as opposed to, "Where have you been?", wagging fingers. That's not going to work, right? So that's how our staff shows up for our students and families.
One of the things that you'll notice is the tightness of the percentage points between each demographic group on your slide. The gold standard for strong attendance is 90%. As you'll notice, two of our demographic groups here are north of 90. Our other demographic, excuse me, three of them are. Our other demographic groups are just a titch behind. This is important for us as a district, as we know, and Dr. Balderas has said this a number of times. We believe the safest place for students to be outside of their home is in school. This is where they have the caring adults, this is where there's access to resources, supports, education, all of the places where our children can be themselves and feel nurtured and supported. So we are proud of the work that our principals are doing. In addition to what Sho was saying about the phone calls home, there's also home visits from trusted adults. It is relationship-based. People can't just show up at somebody's door and expect somebody to answer. That doesn't work. It's through relationship with families that we know, "Oh, something is going on. Oh, can I bring the food box by? Can I support you with transportation? Can I support you with whatever the need happens to be?" It's through relationship that we're learning those pieces. Next, we're going to be talking about BSD's framework for how we support immigrant students and families. We've taken this approach in four buckets, if you will. The first being proactive training for all staff. I'll talk about each of these as we go forward in more depth, as will my colleagues here at the table. The first one that you see the bullet underneath proactive training for all staff is critical for us: clear values and expectations. The Beaverton School District stands firmly on our district values of "belong, believe, and achieve." And what that means for us, as we lead for educational equity for each child, it is rooted in our why, it is rooted in our actions. And part of that, too, is high expectations and clear expectations. High expectations, accountability, training, and support. It is a higher system, the way that we approach this work with our staff. Training for all staff on our BSD policies, practices, and expectations of support, consistent, ongoing updates. This is a regular basis, and not just to our administrators, but to our entire staff on a regular basis as well, recognizing that not everybody catches every email. But if we email three or four times through different channels, there is a higher likelihood for those updates. Also, training expectations. The second bucket is resources for families. Information and connection to legal and emergency services, and training for families as families need it and request. Accessible materials for families. Centralized resources for staff to be able to serve families. And focused communication. Focused communication means not every single message, I'll use Mr. Curl as an example, he is not going to email every family about every programmatic need all of the time. He's going to email families for children who have a programmatic need together. Sometimes, when we're talking about resources such as this, it is absolutely essential that we're communicating with families in ways that do not make them feel more hyper-visible. So we will use the trauma-informed approach and a culturally respectful approach to communicate with our families about resources and services. The third bucket is safe and supportive schools. Schools practice to support students in times of stress, crisis, and emergency. This is something that we were doing before, and that we still maintain and do today, and sharpen our tools every single time. A lot of the work is done with Sho and her team, and our BH&amp;W team, as well as through our other executives who lead this work, and our principals who are supporting the work. We also have very strategic reporting protocols if there is not safety in the community, and that is something that we train and talk about and share information on. And I mentioned the trauma-informed practices. This is the bedrock of how we work with our kids and with our community. When a child is stressed, when a community member is stressed, when a staff member is stressed, meeting them with calm and clarity provides assurance. "I can't fix everything, but I'm going to help in this moment." And the fourth bucket is the social service connections, connections to family and connecting them to the community resources. In Shelley's presentation, the question about the back-and-forth that Director Cossum had about, "Do they learn about resources from, about the school district if they're going to that partnership?" Yes. Part of that is us maintaining those relationships with our community-based organizations. I appreciated hearing about the Beaverton Resource Center, for example, an organization that we work with and that we communicate with regularly. And part of that is that partnership. They work with us, they work with our social workers, and we share resources between us. A lot of times, that is knowledge and connections to other places. In addition, what you don't see noted on there are health services. Having two locations in the district where we have clinics for students, K through 12, we're going to make sure that our kiddos have access to health services as well, and that's part of our community-based network. I'm going to go more deeply into proactive training for staff. As I noted earlier, clear values and expectations is how we lead. This is essential. When folks have clear expectations, they have a better idea of what to expect. We provide training for all staff on BSD's practices, policies, and protocols that support students, especially in this time concerning immigration. Tatiana and I have a process that we started last year and definitely had deeper layers this year, and that was done in partnership with every single principal, every single department administrator, supervisor, et cetera. We had a commitment from every one of them that if it wasn't Tatiana and I doing the training, that they were. In addition to that, we know that staff join us throughout the year. What if they weren't here at the beginning of the year to hear the training? What staff received is an email letting them know that they have a Vector training sitting in their Vector portal. Vector is the methodology that we use for online training. There is a training inside the Vector module for staff who were hired after the 30th of September, which was the deadline date that we had asked all supervisors to make sure that they had shared this information with their staffs. And so any person who was new, including our substitutes after September 30th, have access to that, and any staff member who wanted the information again can also have it. It's sitting in their portal. In addition to that, we've had focused trainings where we knew we needed to pay a different level of attention. Not every person is going to have the same interaction with students. Our bus drivers sure have a lot of interaction with students. This year, Tatiana and I joined our bus drivers at Sunset High School, all of them filling an auditorium, including our sub-bus drivers. We spent several hours with them, talking about educational equity and talking about protocols for safety for students in the time of immigration heightened concerns. We stood shoulder to shoulder with their directors to talk about direct protocols about how to keep kids safe, scenarios, what to do when, making sure that our staff had an idea, "I have a mental map of how I am going to proceed as needed." We've also talked with our staff about protocols for family separation. We've had these protocols in the past. Many of us who've been principals have had situations where we've had kids returned from the bus because the driver was not able to drop them off, there wasn't a parent at home to receive them. Sometimes, there are custody battles, sometimes there are judicial things that are in the way that have prevented parents from being able to be with their kids. On a one-by-one basis, only occasionally, happening sometime in one's career. Circumstances are different, but we still have the same protocols. It is our opportunity to make sure that every staff member understands those protocols and that we are supporting families so that they know that we have a protocol if there was a time when families were separated from their children. There are also regular communications and updates through the Office of Equity and Inclusion, Teaching and Learning, and our district communication channels, which includes our staff talk newsletter that goes out to every single staff member, as does the OEI newsletter. I'm seeing some nods, some of you are receiving those as well. And I also mentioned that Vector training. This is one of the things that you'll notice that is inside of our Intranet site, as well as on our public-facing website. This is something that principals are sharing with their staffs as well. This is our protocol for communication if there's report of immigration enforcement activity suspected or confirmed. We need to make sure that we have a process that folks know, when they report it, we are able to support. So as you look at this process map, if there is a report from a community member, a PERC representative, a student, a staff member, any person reports the activity, it is received and it should be immediately shared with the supervisor, the administrator if it's the school. The school administrator then contacts public safety. We have public safety administrators who stand at the center. Think of it as a spoke and wheel. They're at the center hub, and the spokes go out to the schools, if you will. By having that centralized information, it makes sure that we have a process and we have 360 knowledge about the activity that are happening in our community. We've heard from our public safety partners in the past, and this stands true today. We know that Homeland Security does not communicate with schools, does not communicate with local or community or state police. Therefore, we have to have our own eyes and ears to know what's happening in the community because operating only on "I think, I feel" is not helpful. As much information as we can have, the better. So our public safety officer stands at that place to be able to support. Our public safety officer then does two things with that. Number one, we have the Raptor system that our Board knows about. That's our emergency protocol communication system. All of our administrators are networked through that and are able to communicate directly with our central office and with our public safety. It is our one place, so we're not worrying about texting or phone calls, or this is our central way of staying in communication. The communication happens, and the appropriate supports can be sent to school. The public safety officer also reports to PERC or asks the reporter to report to PERC so that we're networked within our community, and our superintendent is also notified. Supports are deployed to our schools then as needed, depending on what the situation is. What sits in the core of this is care and connection for students. This is coming back to that clarity on expectation about making sure that we are operating in a perky pace sometimes, but definitely with a trauma-informed approach to be able to provide that care and connection for our students. Some things that we talk about when we talk about in our trainings. There are three circles. Imagine this: what's in my control sits in the center circle, my decisions, the things that I do personally, what I have agency over. The next circle out is what I have influence over. I don't control another human, but I can impact another human. How I show up and support other people influences them. And then the outside circle is the circle that's outside of my control. Oftentimes, when we're talking about regulation with students inside the classroom who may be dysregulated, they might be really perseverating on things that are outside of their control. When we start focusing on what's in our control, that's where we have agency. And so when we're talking with our principals and our staff about what's in our control and providing agency, that gives people purposeful things that they can do to be proactive. I cannot change what's outside of my control. I cannot change the legislation, the federal actions. I cannot change those things. I am in control of myself, I'm in control of making sure that I'm standing up and living our district values, and making sure that we are doing everything we possibly can inside of our system to support our kids and our families. As I noted, urgent response to family situations and separations is critical to make sure that each of us has this in place. This is a protocol co-developed with Andrew, who very thoughtfully went through this process with his staff. It is important information that every school should have. Again, we've had situations in our past where students have been separated for their families for a variety of reasons. The sense of urgency sits differently now, and making sure that every staff member has access to this information is critical. School teams, including the principal, the counselor, the social worker, oftentimes the bilingual facilitator, sit as a team that affirms the student, that reports, that activates and provides resources, that coordinates the services and connects to the emergency persons that are part of a child's network. These are one of the ways that we can assure safety for our students, that they are going home to somebody who can support them, who can care for them, and that it is part of the school system that we activate and support. Sho, in her work, as she works directly with our counselors and our social workers, these are the protocols that they also talk about. Our principals work with each of their teams to make sure that they're talking about the protocols that they have with each other, for each other, and for our students. I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Savaios to talk about the resources for our families.
Good evening, and thank you for having us tonight. We have, we, and I say "we," I mean the district in general and the staff, has been responding to the needs and the requests from the community and from what they hear from students, families, and also from staff. Since last year, there have been several opportunities to connect with families and talk about this topic, both in large meetings and in small settings. There have been several schools that offered different trainings and invited community organizations to present to the families in person and virtual. Two of those events have been the Know Your Rights trainings and also the Emergency Preparedness trainings. There has also been support to the families who reach out with one-on-one, talking about what are the things that they can do to prepare in case of separation. The resources that we have posted online are available in Spanish and English in some of the handouts, and some of the ones that are listed in the Internet available to families have been curated and revised and updated based on input. So when we created that at the beginning of January, we had several groups who looked at the resources and we said, "What about adding this information?" Or, "This information is not clear." As a result of interacting with staff members, we have developed more resources and also changed the visibility and the layout of some of them. If you walk into a school, you will probably find some of the resources in the main office. One of them is what staff can and cannot do to support families. That was a direct interaction with staff from the school who was sitting and walking with families on the information that we had already posted, and now we know that it wasn't that easy to read, so here it is, a version that is user-friendly. Those are the things that we have been updating and working with families. As Shelley mentioned before, there has been all communicate... As Shelley mentioned before, there has been all district communication to families about supports that are available, specifically the resources on the internet. And those resources were presented to you last year. If you look again today, it's updated with more information. One of the things that I have heard from the community is like, how do we find them? So an easy way to find them is just do a Google search, Beaverton School District, immigrant, and it goes to that page. It's also available in the main page, and as you go into the BSD main page and you go into search, you can just put the word immigrant and it will bring you to the page. Or if you look in the family resources, which is organized alphabetically, you go down and that's the page that families can access. For several of the resources and the sessions that have been organized for families, there's strategic communication to the families who are interested or have shared that they want to have this information and focal populations. When some of the events about the emergency preparedness or Know Your Rights trainings take place, it's not widely advertised, and you may not see that as you drive by the school, but the people who need the information have been contacted in multiple ways and are aware of the supports and the information that is available. As we think about the emergency preparedness trainings, or resources rather, there are several links in our internet and there are pages that you can look and see what are the different things that families need to have in place. An example would be, do you have copies of your car keys, of your house keys, and even your mailbox, and where are those located? Or some of the information that has to do with passports, birth certificates, marriage certificates, all of those. And there might be some paperwork also that families need to have, where you actually give the power of attorney to somebody who in the event of your absence would be the one who's going to take care of your kid and is going to have the rights to enroll the students in school or take decisions in case of a medical emergency. So that kind of papers are available for families to look, and they come from several organizations. There might be a need for somebody to have that paperwork filled out and be notarized. So in the district, we do have a person here that is a NURI, and the plan is to provide services for school staff to also have at least one notary in the school in the event that is needed. And it's another way to support the family. When you think about emergencies, it's not just about families who are facing situations due to immigration, it could be anything. If I think about my own self, and if I travel and I can't come back, and my husband is out of town, who's going to take care of my son? I myself need to go do those kind of papers to know that there's a process in place to secure the ability for my child to be with somebody who can act as a guardian. So all those things are in place. You heard from Shelley earlier that there was a lot of work done with extending food resources. That's another way to support the families. And as it was mentioned before, when we hear the need, we address it. And we have multiple ways, and staff who are in contact directly with families, and they let their administrator knows, their executives, there's a lot of communication as to how we can respond to the needs. And I'll wrap it and make sure that there's time for my colleagues to present.
Good evening, thank you for having us here this evening. Building on what Dr. Savios, Dr. Regiani have said already, one piece of our motto is we belong, all students belong. And we have built safe and supportive schools, continue to improve in that area because we want students to know that they belong and families know they belong to us. With our strategic plan, there's a focus on belonging of safety and belonging in all schools. And if we think of how we support our families, our students, we do it in a tiered model. There is some supports that we give to all students and all families. So if we think of our social emotional learning lessons and advisory class, if we think of trying to build a relationship with a trusted adult for every student in every one of our buildings, so they feel well-known by at least one adult in the room, not that they feel safe coming to school and returning home safely too, that they know that they have teachers and support staff that will listen to them and care for them and know their one-on-one situation. So we do that for all students as we focus on belonging. Part of that is also recognizing when students are absent and responding to those absences with check-ins to see if they're okay, if there's anything we can do different. And when there is a trend of absences, that we're listening to what are the underlying causes and welcoming students back when they come in. We also are in regular communication with our families through newsletters, through direct outreaches. In cases where we are going to tier-two or tier-three supports, we take our cues from students and families. We have a responsibility to listen in a culturally responsive manner to what the students' needs are and what the families' needs are. Sometimes in our rush to help people, we impose a solution without listening to what help they would like and the manner in which they would like to receive that help. It's important that we do that, assuring student and family confidentiality, and that we're doing it in a respectful way that honors their culture and honors their personal An important part of providing safe and supportive schools, as Dr. Regiani said earlier, is making sure that the staff that the students and families are interacting with have the most up-to-date, most current tools readily available to them to use with families and to connect them with other team members in the school, if that's what's appropriate. Our counselors and our social workers, our bilingual liaisons are on the front lines with us. They know our students, and they're regularly delivering food, school supplies, chargers if they need them for their Chromebook, to families and to students. And recognizing, maybe paying a little bit closer attention to attendance for some of those families that they know well right now, so that we can build a plan to have the student back in school. You'll see on this list that there is an opportunity to transfer to an online school in cases of emergency or hardship, and that has existed before the current situation. We are leaning into that for students who, maybe for fear of being able to get to school and home safely, that this is an opportunity that we're discussing with them. In fact, one of our high schools, Sunset High School, created a model communication guide for counselors and social workers and the front office staff to really be thinking about what options do we discuss with students and families, what would be the process to access those, and what are the considerations? Knowing that students typically have the strongest support system in their home school, in their brick-and-mortar school, rather than going online, trying to preserve that relationship and be flexible in our thinking. So that maybe a student comes to school for part of the day, or every other day in their home high school, and the other half of the time in our online school. Maybe it makes sense to connect them with our Passages program. If the student is close to graduation, can we move them to graduate early in January? Really looking at what's the best place for our students who are becoming separated from their parents. If they're eligible for a Kenny Vento, making sure that we're enrolling them in the program, or if a family situation has changed and now they're eligible, making sure that we are enrolling them, and that helps us provide a more supportive transportation to them. So again, this is an individual conversation with families. It's not something that we advertise to all families. It's for students and families who are experiencing a need right now, and we tailor our support to those individuals. The structures that schools are developing and that TNL staff are developing, those are being shared, so that everyone is recreating the wheel, and we're listening to people's good ideas as they come up. But what's most important is that we have a staff who's committed to meeting the needs of our kids, to making sure that they feel safe, that they belong in schools, and providing that tiered support to them. And I'll pass it back to Shou Shibuya.
Thank you. So I hope you're hearing from all of us that our staff's commitment to developing deep, deep relationship through listening is what we're focusing on right now as we support our staff to show up for our students. And it's through that deep listening, that's how we develop trust with our students and families. And when they trust us, they let us know how we can help them, how we can support them, and how we can partner with them. And Jill talked about all of the internal work that our social workers and counselors and the staff do in terms of how do we really support students when they're here. That's very critical. In addition to that, our support team members, the members of our Behavioral Health and Wellness Team, again, our counselors, social workers, bilingual facilitators, sometimes school psychologists, they also talk about how we coordinate services in the community. Yes, we do our best as a school, but there's only so much we can do, right? As far as connecting families to health services, mental health services, community-based organizations that are culturally specific. Our social workers are just amazing, just they are so on top of resources. In fact, when we had a list of food pantries available in the community, a couple of social workers came to me and say, hey, you're missing this one, hey, you're missing that one. So our people are so well-connected in the community, and we're just so lucky to have deeply committed social workers. Oh, sorry. Oh, I am so sorry, and that's why I got the clicker, and I'm like, duh.
I know, I really want to, no, yeah, I want to thank you guys, unless there's more that you want to do. I wanted to give each board member at least to make a comment or ask a question, and then we can have a follow-up. Maybe they can email and meet with you guys, or you could help them further, but at least, because it is an important topic, and all the board members had shown an interest to hear from all of you, and you have given us really good information. Unless there is something that we are missing, I would like to give our board members a chance to ask, were you going to present something, or is there more presentation left, or?
We have about 15 minutes.
Yes, each are two other members at my right-hand side of the table. We're going to speak specifically, and we can do this in rapid pace, about the high school experience and the K-8 experience to give you a little bit more context.
And I can ask what the board members would like.
Yeah, I think understanding there's a time limit, like I have a lot of questions, and that was partially the goal or objective with this, as much as it was to understand what we're doing, it was also to create awareness on, hey, how are we approaching it, and create some framing for the community. So I'd love to take the time to ask questions, and I'd actually implore, we go beyond, like I have a lot of questions, and I don't think 10 minutes is enough. And I think it's not just about getting answers for me, it's about answers for the community who might be listening as well.
Yeah, I thank you for that, Director Kasim, but there are board members who need to leave on time, or we can go maybe, can we go 15, 30 minutes more, or what would you? She has to leave at 7:00. Okay, but let's pause here, and I would like each board member to have a chance to at least make a comment or ask a question. Why don't we start with Dr. Potter and go around?
My statement will just be, thank you for sharing an enormous amount of information, and what you shared so far, we haven't gotten to hear from everyone, but matches what we heard at the showcase on Tuesday from our school leaders, that the modeling and showing how much you respect each other for the work that everybody has a piece of the puzzle to play, every day in our schools, especially right now. And the trust that you have in each other to be doing what's right for kids, and it is really tough. And yet, we have, I would argue, the best of the best of the best staff in Oregon and potentially in the nation. And we heard that strongly with your presentation, we heard that very strongly during the showcase. So I don't have any questions, just a lot of gratitude for everything that everybody's done to step up.
Thank you. Director Kasim?
Thank you. Thank you, Chair. Feeling a little rushed for time, I had a lot of questions, but I'm going to try and run through it. I do want to preface by thanking you all for this incredibly thorough and detailed information, and I'm sorry we couldn't get through it all. I also want to thank Dr. Bilderes and Dr. Regiani for making this time and space for this really important and timely conversation about what is happening in this community. I'm going to take just a second to frame it. I want to establish that the nature of some of my questions is meant to educate, inform, and empower both the board and the community about the work of the district, as well as how it continues to be a priority for all of us, given the assault that our community is experiencing out there. So I have to be honest on that. The approach would be firm but fair. We've heard from students, we have heard from families, we recently saw over 500 members of our community send a letter, signing, asking for more, asking us to do more. And I have to say that at the very outset, while this may not have been the intention, the impact was this, that when you put that attendance slide as the first thing, it frames the conversation as almost a rejection of the idea that the students are not really being impacted and everyone's coming to school. And again, acknowledging that might not have been the intent, that you might have been trying to say, hey, we're not experiencing any impact of this as the way you might be hearing about it as community leaders or a community might be saying, which is fair. But I really, really want to emphasize that that doesn't send the right message. And we really need to be intentional about it. Over and over, I heard from most of you about, we hear from the students, we hear from the community, I want to know how? What avenues are we using to listen to these students that are impacted or the families? So let's start with that as the first question. Can someone help me with what are these avenues? What resources are we using to listen and engage?
Multiple resources, multiple avenues. Every single one of our schools has their own specific methodology to make sure that they're connecting with students. At our elementary level, where there is morning meeting time, where teachers are working with their students directly. In middle school, where they have win time, where they're working with one of their teachers most closely. Also in high school, where we have advisory. In addition to that, that's just one small group session where they're attached to a very caring adult who establishes a relationship with them. Our social workers and our counselors also do listening sessions with groups, small group works, and our principals also do that on a regular basis. There is a multitude of methodology of how we listen to our students. It's not just a survey. It's not just a, let me take a quick temperature to see how it's doing. The taking attendance component is important. We look at that to make sure, are we seeing any changes that we need to be sensitive to by group? Recognizing that immigration affects every single culturally specific group, including people who are white-presenting. It impacts everyone. It impacts every single person at this table differently. I've looked to our administrators for K-8 and our high school administrators, if there are an additional way that we're doing some listening sessions for students that you'd like to share.
Yeah, thank you. Yes, as Dr. Regiani mentioned, there's several things, several different ways that we're soliciting feedback and listening to students at Beaverton High School. That includes, like she mentioned, our advisory. Recently at Beaverton, we've had multiple incidences where kids have come to us, you know, with fear and uncertainty, and in some cases have had sudden losses of separations from families or parents. And all of that has been rooted on, the relationships have been established. Since that time, our team has come together to generate multiple ways to react to these situations and to support students. Some of them have been staff stepping up to create affinity spaces for students and listening sessions in that way, some of which has just been sort of the resource, providing food packing, things like that. Also, you know, greeting students. Um, also, you know, greeting students in the morning, uh, uh, on the, on the public streets, making sure that kids are feeling safe and connected and knowing that they have trusted adults to share information with. Um, because when we know that our kids are, kids are sharing it with us, it's, we're able to put a lot of the protocols um, that Dr. Regiani shared in place. Um, so I, I think that we've really prided ourselves on, on creating a culture where kids can come to us. Um, and we've, um, feel like we've really, um, provided a really safe, trusting place where, where kids do feel like school is a safe place where they can be.
I'd say additional to that, listening to our students is also having direct access on a regular basis for our community and our parents to be able to network directly with the social worker, the counselor, the bilingual facilitator, the office professional, and the principal. Many of our schools have culturally specific parent groups, coffee chats, if you will, that are culturally specific that meet with our school staff on a regular basis. Sometimes they're via Zoom. If that is the most sensitive and safe way and culturally responsive way to be meeting with families, our principals also do that on a regular basis.
Uh, thank you, uh.
Director Kasim, can we, can we go one, uh, let's give others a chance.
I thought I still had the mic.
I know. Thank you. Uh, Dr. Carpenter.
I am feeling a little bit frustrated as well that this is not the, um, work session that I'd hoped for because, um, I do feel pretty connected to community as well. And I know you guys do, too. And I was hoping to bring that into the conversation. And to feel like we have to do this in thirteen minutes is really disappointing. Um, I, I think on some level, a lot of the questions and concerns I wanted to bring tonight was fundamentally about trust. And what I do believe and what I hear from the community and I hear from families is that they, they do trust that their students are safe in our schools, which is great. And we want them in our schools, they feel like their students are safe in schools. Where I feel like we lose trust with the community is that we are pretending that the bus stops are safe, that the walking to schools are safe. That the, you know, the, that, that, that they, the idea that somebody was taken from near Beaverton High School and communication goes out that that absolutely did not happen, ICE was not here, which may be true. Um, but what we could say instead, in order to continue to work to build trust is, you know, we saw a car, the car that we saw, we went and we confirmed it was a legal observer and we checked all our cameras, we did not see ICE. And so instead of saying ICE was not here, um, in ways that can break trust and feel a little bit like gaslighting to our community, um, we can say, here are all the ways that we tried to confirm that ICE was here and we weren't able to confirm that. And so, um, there, there's a number of opportunities for us to, um, bring, you know, have, uh, encourage families and students, um, to trust to get their kids to school safely and back home safely. Um, and, and I think that we are, um, missing that opportunity by not being honest with our, with our community. So, um, I also have more questions, but, um, I can stop there.
Thank you, Dr. Carpenter. Dr. Perez.
Hi, good evening. Um, thank you so much for your presentation. Um, some of the pieces that I've been thinking about is, um, something I'm very appreciative of is, are the protocols and the structures that you have set up and that you explained today? And the, um, continuous training and visualization of what would I do as an administrator or as a, um, front office staff or a bus driver if something were to happen? Um, because the situation is changing on the daily. And having these protocols and, um, trainings for staff that will be the, who are the frontline, um, allow us and allow them, um, to have the confidence and to be agile. And for us as a system with our, all the different partners to be agile in our approach and our supports to our students. Not everyone needs, not every staff member, not every person in a building needs to know or should know. Um, and in the, what staff cannot do, you have, we cannot ask or require a student to share or demonstrate their immigration status or birthplace. We cannot violate district policies and procedures or laws such as FERPA that involve students' information, including external requests for student and family information. So what I'm experiencing and what I'm hearing, um, from families is that when they are showing up, it's when kids are going, families are, I, I see the other side of that attendance slide where our families are doing what they can to get students to school because you have set up these structures and our principals and our teachers and our classified staff have set up spaces that allow for them to feel safer, to have some normal, normal, um, normalcy? I can't think of the word in English, um, normality, some, um, a space where they know the sequence of what's gonna happen in that day. And that has been really helpful to them. Um, they're, the people that know, the counselors, as soon as the staff knows, the counselors knows, the principal knows, then they can put these pieces into place and support the families as they, as they, um, are, have different needs. So for me, um, thank you for the information. I know, as you mentioned, that we're continuing to learn. And as you're hearing from us, you have those spaces with other districts. You have those spaces nationally, locally, at our state, where the information continues to flow on how to best and how to be agile, how to, um, serve our students. As the situation continues to change, I really appreciate the structures and protocols. And I heard you say, we're continuing to adapt, we're continuing to, as we learn more, we change, we get, we're continuing to be agile. Um, and I see, um, how you're centering the needs of our students and our families, not only with the immigration pieces, but also with SNAP and SNAP food, um, requirements are there. And as other things are gonna come at us, these structures are gonna be really helpful as we continue to grow and learn together to support our families and our communities um, within the spaces that we can and have control of, um, in our buildings. So thank you so much.
Thank you, Dr. Perez. Dr. Trong.
Uh, first of all, thank you for the presentation and all the work that you are doing with the, uh, building staff and with the community. Um, I believe that, um, as we communicate more details to our communities, then we will, um, the community will understand more, right? Because in the lack of communication, there are voids. So there, when there are voids, then people start making up stories. And then when they make up the stories or things just blow out of control, right? So I think that if we can have more communication on this, because this is also such an important, um, uh, facts for many of us. And, um, so that's the thing, I think that's what I would love to kinda have this, like post it on our website, the presentation, uh, not just in the work session video, but also like on the website, right? Um, what, all the wonderful things that our staff are doing. Um, and I am positive that there are rooms for us to improve, right? And I think that's why we need to also listen to community members and so how we can improve. Um, but during the week, uh, this week's school showcase, when the board directors, uh, we were engaged with the principal regarding the school and plan, I took the opportunity to ask, uh, the administration team to discuss student attendance, staff, you know, staff perception of the district, uh, support, and how are they helping, uh, assist the families in respond to this event? And I also inquire about the overall well-being and the sense of safety among the student body. And I consistently got the message from the team that, you know, the, the attendance have declined in the first couple of weeks, but now the students are back. And I appreciate, uh, what Dr. Perez said, that, you know, they, the parents are really making all the efforts to make sure that, that their student come to school. And I also understand that some parents also have other neighbors bring them to school so they don't have to come to school, right? So, so I also, um, hearing a lot of things from the parents, but they also appreciative of, uh, how school districts are supporting them. And there's also, um, uh, I hear that some teachers said they haven't received the, uh, trainings. And it's also, I think, posted as well. So that's something I heard today, uh, that, um, of all the, um, trainings that they receive because they really do need to receive the, um, professional development. So I appreciate that. Um, and also that the schools said that, um, they've, I also asked if they felt supported by the district on this crisis time. And they, all of the nine schools I talked to, they, not because I'm the board, but they say that, oh, yes, they got supported because I asked them, what can the superintendent do better, uh, to support you? Um, so I want to also share a personal experience. Um, if you all remember during COVID, Asian hate was a personal experience for me during COVID. And, and for the Asian community as well. Um, you know, not just under the federal policies, um, many Asian people live in fear. We were targeted, uh, I'm not gonna cry today, I practiced not crying. Not only by the government rhetoric, but also by people on the street, by neighbors, by strangers, and even in schools. I wonder if anyone knows that there were so many illegal adoptions, I'm sorry, abduction, abductions and deportations at the time towards Asian-American community. Because we are the model minority, we don't get mentioned. I understand how painful that period was for many of us, including myself. Um, we also saw, you know, experienced ICE conduct illegal adoption here in Oregon. That, that is unacceptable, right? What we're experiencing is unacceptable. Because it's added fear and the trauma of our communities we're already experiencing. So, uh, and I'm saying that this is why we must focus and must remain on the federal policies in action that cause disharm and not attacking each other within our own state. We should stand together and support one another. That is the real solution. And we must remember that this is an attack on immigrants. It's the attack to the foundation of this country. And I deeply appreciate the passion and concern that my fellow board members have expressed regarding the difficult events affecting our schools, our state, and especially our immigrants in the community of colors. I also hope that we carry this same level of compassion and urgency into our discussions later about student achievement, academic data, and attendance. And we need to continue to hold ourselves collectively accountable for the academic success and well-being of every student and ready for post-high school success. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Trong. Director Raji.
Uh, Juan, thank you for the, this update. Um, uh, I'm gonna try to be as brief as possible. Uh, one, uh, all of us, as we're going to have to continue working on this issue, um, in terms of what's communicated, uh, my essential experience in terms of engaging with communities and others is not that there is a lack of response, um, or care at any building. Um, I've, but there is a, there's some space in between how to talk about this. Um, as a person who, from my social work lens, existed in the acute, uh, space of violence prevention, response to, to, to high-level violence, therefore my tuning is always to the people closest to the violence, not to the people who, you know, vicarious, you know, trauma is real and care is real. And I care that those people get what they need, but my, my primary concern is always people who are right there who, who went home and a parent was going, did that kid get told no when they came to our building? Did someone not respond when they came to our building? Did we not try when they came to our building? My experience of ours has not heard that to be the case. I've not heard a community organ say, we wanted to provide service too. And we wanted to take the steps to do that so that, you know, whatever paperwork, background checks, blah, 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 that they could do those things, right? So that's where my heart is at on this. We have to figure out, and there's room for improvement in how we talk about this, um, what questions people have about an incident or a sighting or not sighting. Um, you know, I can't remember all the exact details of the emails and communications about the proximity and whether it was said that someone was not on a campus. Cause if someone was not, if the campus, if the district can't prove they were on a campus, they can't go on the public record and say, well, we think they were on the campus. I don't know how that serves a sense of safety, right? But also I do know we are accountable if we put something on the public record that we can't prove. Um, on the issue of numbers and as we do this work, and especially as we don't lose sight of the, our conversation about academics and it's one of the hardest things in this country for people to deal with, the numbers are the numbers. So when we get numbers that the kids ain't reading, it might hurt people's feelings, everybody gets upset. Nobody wants to be the one to say, well, what, do you wanna pass the buck? Ultimately, none of that helps the immediate need of those kids. Again, from my lens of what the work I've done in my life, I appreciate where people are. But we, as a board, we're gonna take time with this. And we need to, I would, I would encourage us to get, one, to not hold back on communicating questions to our administration so we can get them on the desk. Um, I understand, you know, the flow of the day and the time of the day, but we have the option to make more time. And we're gonna have to make more time, we're gonna have to figure out spaces, some stuff are gonna, you know, I think it might be advisable for deep questions for board members, um, put together some structures to sit and maybe have those more intense questions and maybe even can publish those or share those insights, um, to the community in another way. We need to be creative about that. Um, second, and, and I do wanna put this on the board's mind, we have a resolution that we passed last year and a part of this discussion also starting a process for, so our new board members who are not a part of that resolution, that declaration of commitment to service would have time to add thoughts so that we can update that to meet the current moment. And again, those are things that were in our purview as board members to do. Then the next step is if we have very specific things, um, that are suitable for a board to, to give to our superintendent, say, Dr. Belderes, take this to the staff and get busy with it. We need to start crafting those thoughts and, and I would push us to not get to the weeds of granularity, but get to the clarity of mission and purpose and not vagaries so that we have something that we can say tangible that is going to happen. As I said, when we did the resolution last year, I don't want a word in there that is not something that's already, that's not happening in this district and we don't have the capacity to do. Cause then we're lying, then we're making strongly worded letters that don't actually mean nothing when it comes to action. And I'm not writing strongly worded letters that I can't back up. Not gonna have my name on it, not gonna have my word on it. With that, cause I want us to wrap up and I want us, our own, that this is gonna take more time. And my continued to the community, my email, my phone number's open. Somebody is experiencing something that is not congruent with what they have heard. Come on, tell me, don't, you know, say, you don't gotta tell me your name, maybe I, I put a mask on, you do the, the shadow box thing, whatever have you. But we, we have to fix the problem. I cannot exist and respond to, well, I think, I feel, or maybe, I'm not sure. I want to, I would love to, but I, I know that will not soothe the pain. So let's just continue work, if we'll check in as board leadership and figure out what are, if we need to put some other specific things. And then let's put together a structure so that we can get all questions answered. But also what's the way we can get, answer those questions out to the world in the most effective ways possible? Thank you.
Thank you, Director Raji. Um, first of all, I wanna thank all of our board members for bringing this important issue. And thank you to the Dr. Belderes and the staff and all of you people for turning this around so fast, bringing this timely information for our community members. Um, I, I believe that, you know, questions has been brought up and I have seen a change in how this, the district is responding to it. I do hear that you all are listening to our students. that you all are listening to our students and the needs of our students. I mean, having pantries in each school, making sure that kids get fed, this is not an easy task. And our board members, thank you, please bring questions, please bring community members, write the questions, so that you all can, I mean, I can, I have seen the changes in our website, you know, the information that is being provided, the information that is being given to our, um, staff, our principals in our schools, that they are better prepared for if something happens. And then I like the, those three circles that Dr. Regiani talked about, you know, what can I do? What can be influenced? What can be impacted? What we don't have, uh, power over. So when, when people, when the community bring questions, I mean, there are, just by listening to you all, I have wonderings about things that could be done better. Okay, this is really good that you guys did. Are we good, supporting online school? Are we supporting, what more can we do so that our students are able to function well in our schools? And also, let's not lose our focus from student achievement too, like Dr. Trong said, let's, we will, we would like to have that more in agenda, but our kids can only achieve if they feel safe in our schools. So I thank you all for being here today and, uh, bringing this information. And Dr. Balderez, would you like to say?
So we obviously need more, more time. I'll work with leadership to make sure that we have more time, possibly the next meeting, for the board to be able to answer questions, and you can sit down at the meeting. So, and, um, to also maybe be in small groups of the board. Uh, I'll meet with leadership to figure out how to best navigate the, the board questions and, uh, have more time at a future board meeting to be able to have this dialogue. It may be, it may be best to, again, have it during a board meeting, so we can have an agenda, have public here, and, uh, I think that's the goal, like, when, when I talk to board leadership.
This was our final agenda item. The November twentieth, twenty twenty-five work session of Beaverton School Board is adjourned at seven seventeen P M. Thank you, everyone. Good night.